Good afternoon and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's Cablecast Public Hearing for Monday, February 3rd, 2025, relative to Bill 2025-1452. My name is Deborah Gross. I'm the City Councilwoman for District 7. Will the Clerk please read the title of the bill?
Bill 1452, ordinance entitled, directing the Allegheny County Board of Elections to place before the qualified voters of the city of Pittsburgh at the 2025 May primary election, a referendum question. Shall the Pittsburgh Home Rule Charter be amended and supplemented by adding a new Article 11, right to public ownership of potable water systems, wastewater system, and storm sewer systems, which restricts the lease and/or sale of the city's water and sewer system to private entities?
For the record, we are joined today by Councilmember Strasburger. Do we have any other members online? Nope. Other members may be joining us shortly or be watching from their offices. Our next order of business will be testimony from our registered speakers. Please give your name and address for the public record. Each speaker will have three minutes to address the council. And what I'll do is read two names at once so that you know that you're coming up, whether you're here in person or whether you're at home, so that you can see that you're the next person in line, so you can get a cue. And I'll also mention that I have only seven registered speakers, just for a heads up, if you've registered for the water referendum for 1452. And if you are not registered, you will be, go after the registered speakers, and you will have only one minute to speak. So the first name I have up is Chief Poma Chakman Yahalahi. And following Chief Poma, we have Aleheb Chanal-Kin, whose name I've not had to pronounce out loud myself, I'm sorry. Is Chief Poma ready to speak? Sorry, Chief, you have three minutes.
In the cack, allakeen, everyone. That just means the light in me honors the light in you. And I'm happy to be here today to push forward in this great referendum that's going to help to protect the water, Pittsburgh water, and continue to make it public. Working with great council people such as Deb Gross and Teresa Strasburger, not Teresa Strasburger, I don't want to mess anybody's name up or title. I appreciate that the vision was already there and that all we needed to do was gather together to formulate the right people and push this thing forward. So I don't have a lot to say. I've been ill and I'm recovering, so I'm kind of winded. I did want to say I give thanks to all of you councilpeople who decided to do the right thing for the city of Pittsburgh. I work with Pittsburgh United. I work as an upstream PGH advocacy consultant, and I'm also an environmental justice table lead that's a part of Pittsburgh Upstream. And we know the importance of our water. We know the importance of our water because it is life. It is essential for all of us. And as an Aboriginal American Indian, it's not taxed. It is really the blood of the land. That's what I look at water as being, the blood. And none of us wants to shed blood uselessly or waste that precious mineral and that precious material or natural resource, I should say. So again, I'm here to suggest that everyone listening, from wherever you are, when this comes upon the time for you to vote for this referendum, please do so, because it is going to be important for future generations to come. The work we do today, sometimes we don't get to live to see the great flourishing benefits of it, but our future generations will always be able to see that. So I thank you all, to all the councilmembers with a nine to zero vote in the affirmative to put it on the ballot box, and for all those who will come out and see that will know that they're making history today. And this is a historical event. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We have Aleheb Chanal-Kin, I beg your pardon, followed by Gabriel Gray. Do we have our next speaker, Aleheb Chanal-Kin? No? Okay. We'll take, well, can come back if you're just not able to come to the mic. I'll call your name again at the end. But so next, we'll have Gabriel Gray, followed by Joanne Tippett. Again, don't forget to give your name and neighborhood for the record. Oh, and let the record reflect that we've been joined by Councilwoman Barb Warwick and Councilwoman Bobby Wilson, sorry.
Good afternoon.
And Council President Daniel Lavelle's online. Sorry, Gabriel.
That's all right. Just make sure everybody's on record being here. If I may begin?
Yes, please.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for being here today. My name is Gabrielle Gray. I am a Homewood resident, and I am here to support the referendum that will ask the question, do we want to keep Pittsburgh water a public authority? And one of the core principles of water justice is ensuring that everyone in our communities has access to safe, affordable water service that we all deserve. I know I got into this fight through a housing issue when it came to my lead line replacement. And if Pittsburgh water was not public and organizing with community, I do not believe that I would have received my lead line replacement as easy as I was able to receive it, in particular, living in Homewood, which is an environmental justice community. City leadership, Pittsburgh Water officials, and our coalition partners have worked collaboratively on the ordinance with a clear focus on enforceability and rejecting future privatization efforts in no uncertain terms. As community stakeholders, by working collaboratively with city leadership and Pittsburgh Water officials, today we can take the much-needed step to keeping Pittsburgh water publicly controlled and ensuring community members and ratepayers maintain a key voice in all decisions made about our water. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Joanne Tippett, followed by Marcella Gonzalez-Rivas.
I'm Joanne Tippett, and I'm one of the advocacy coordinators for the Environmental Justice Table, which is headquartered at Upstream Pittsburgh, which is a nonprofit here in Pittsburgh. And I'm offering comment in support of the referendum for keeping the water in Pittsburgh public. It is a basic human right to have access to clean and safe water. The private ownership of a water system, there's a possibility that rates for water service would have little or no oversight, making it possible for rates to be raised above consumers' ability to pay. The water access would then be unaffordable. At the Water Equity Summit in 2024, several problems with unaffordability were presented, which includes impacts to consumer credit in addition to the lack of drinking water. Such problems should be prevented. Amending the Home Rule Charter to maintain Pittsburgh water as a public resource would help with this. And so I'm in support of the referendum being added to the ballot in May. Thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you. Next, we have Marcella Gonzalez-Rivas, followed by Sam Gibson. Do we have Marcella Gonzalez-Rivas online? If so, you, I think you pressed star six to unmute yourself, or do we just unmute them? How does it work?
Hi, can you hear me?
Thank you. Yes, we've got you now.
Hi. Thank you so much for this initiative. I'm speaking in favor of keeping water in Pittsburgh public. In addition to what others have stated about the reason why it is so crucial to keep water public in Pittsburgh aside from water affordability, there's a widespread recognition among Americans about water access being a human right. There's a recent poll conducted by Water Hub, a national organization, that found that 89% of Americans recognize the importance of the human right to water. And one key aspect for this is that access to water is threatened by privatization efforts. That is, many studies show that water service provision should be treated as public, as this is the model that is most compatible to the human right to water. As opposed to private ownerships, we know corporate or investor-owned systems operate under the criterion of profit maximization, which is in the right opposition to the human right to water. Many studies show that investor-owned systems charge higher rates, but there's other disadvantages, other important factors that matter, like when water systems are kept public, there's higher democratic governance, public governance, there's transparency, there's accountability, and there's more chances of people participating in important issues as water systems. And so for these and many other reasons, I think that it is very important to keep our public, our water, public. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we have Sam Gibson, followed by Tanya Todd. Do we have Mr. Gibson? Okay, we'll wait and call your name again when we get back. Next, we have Tanya Todd.
Okay. Hello, my name is Tanya Todd. You can hear me okay?
We can hear you.
Okay. I am a part of Pittsburgh United, a member, and resident of Homewood. And I am in support of keeping the water, for the water company, to remain public, not privatizing. Keeping Pittsburgh water has helped them to transform into the award-winning agency that they are today and to put in a place initiative like their lead line replacement program, their customer service assistance program, and water reliability program that are meeting taxpayers' needs. Your commitment to ratepayers not only shows that in their actions incorporate the spirit, but in supporting this referendum. Today, we can take a major step toward, sorry, forward to keep control of Pittsburgh water where rightfully it belongs, in the hands of customers and community members. It has been from my personal experience, where I've had issues with the lines, and not only myself, but other residents in my neighborhood, and I've had sewers four or five inches in my basement, and neighbors threatening me because of the odor and with, excuse me, PWSA has worked with us and are continuing to work with us with, excuse me, with trying to reconcile some of these issues that we have been dealing with and or presently dealing with. So I am in support of this referendum to go on the ballot. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm going to go back up to the top of the list that we've gone through the registered speakers once, and I'll go back to Aleheb Chanal-Kin. Do we have Aleheb online? No? Okay. And I'll go back to Sam Gibson. Do we have Sam Gibson online or in chambers? Nope. Okay. That exhausts our registered speakers. Do we have any unregistered speakers wanting to speak? Please come to the podium, identify yourself, name for the record. Unfortunately, you'll have one minute to speak.
Audrey Glickman, I live in Greenfield. I'm here to speak about the other bills primarily, but if any councilperson needs any refresher course on the pension and parking debacle of the last decade, I would be happy to provide it. I was here, and all I can say is, please don't privatize any authority board or commission. We were, we learned how important that is during that debacle, which I guess was in 2010 or 11. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else wishing to speak in chambers? Just approach the podium, identify your name and neighborhood for the record.
Helita, my name is Bianca. As an CHATA woman, it has always been pressed upon me how we are the caretakers of the land, the air, the water, the trees, as well as other people, the animals. And to privatize the water would be taking away from the people in various ways. It would be taking away from the animals in various ways. We already have an issue with the overpollution of water. We already have that issue. Privatizing the water would just make that issue that much worse. And not only, as other people have stated, it would restrict access for a lot of people and make water very unaffordable, which it shouldn't be an issue of affordable or unaffordable, because water is for everyone. It is for the animals, it is for the trees, it is for people. So that is all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, one minute just go very quickly. Do we have anyone else in chambers or online who wish to testify? If not, I will ask any councilmembers if they have anything that they would like to add or respond to. Absolutely, Councilwoman Strasburger?
Thank you. Well, Councilwoman Gross, I really want to thank you for your leadership, not just today, but over the years on this, on this particular issue, from your time serving on Pittsburgh Water's Board, still have to get used to not calling it PWSA anymore, to, you know, your fight to remove leadlines from our, our streets and our, the lines connecting our homes. And this fight has been going on for a long time. And unfortunately, so luckily in Pittsburgh, we have leadership that is committed to keeping our water public nationally, you know, the National Association of Water Companies, or at the state level, there are threats to smaller, more vulnerable water authorities, and we have to be vigilant at the state level. And this will really cement our current leadership's commitment at Pittsburgh Water, at the mayor's office, on council, to keep our water public. So grateful to you, I'm grateful to all the advocates, our Water Table, Pittsburgh United, others, for continuing to keep this at the forefront. And just to kind of put a finer point on what I've been, you know, thinking over the years on this issue, we know, one, that private water corporations are, their primary purpose is increasing profits for private equity holders. And so we know that they often cut corners to reduce operating costs negatively impacting water or service quality or both. So I think it's pretty laughable to tell people in Pittsburgh that the best way to fix their water system is to privatize it, because we had private, partially privatized management through Veolia. The water corporation walked away with millions of dollars while we've been repairing the water system ever since. And as current vice chair of Pittsburgh Water, I know that their main goal is to keep our water reliable, affordable, and public, and I've never been more confident in Pittsburgh Water's ability to maintain this standard. So again, I think this would really cement our intentions as a collective body, and I hope, I hope people will come out and vote in favor of this, should it end up on the election, on the ballot in the May election. So thank you again for your leadership.
Anyone else at the table? Councilwoman Wilson?
I just want to voice my support for this bill, well, for this referendum question, and looking forward to coming back to council. Thanks for your leadership. Thanks for your leadership as well, and looking forward to the vote. I guess it'll probably appear back on our agenda next Wednesday? Yep. All right, thanks.
I'm not sure if, actually, we did provisional vote on it already, if we just held it.
Tomorrow.
So it's final vote tomorrow. Final vote tomorrow, FYI. So yes, also, there will be chance for public comment tomorrow morning. It will be on our agenda for tomorrow, Tuesday. And a reminder, I echo what the councilmember said, I won't take up time since we have two more public hearings to follow this. Council's only power is to put this on your ballot, so that this question, if we vote positively tomorrow, will appear in front of the voters. Only the people have the power to amend the Home Rule Charter. And so is the power of the people to put this as an article in the Home Rule Charter, which will not just memorialize intentions, but hopefully be binding on future public servants to honor the people as well. That is the intent. So that with that, I am going to not recess this meeting, but I am just going to step away and allow Councilwoman Strasburger chairing the next two public hearings. Thank you.
All righty. Well, good afternoon again, everybody. And we are here to, at a Pittsburgh City Council's Cablecast Public Hearing, again, Monday, February 3rd, 2025, relative to Bills 1425 and 1426 of 2025. Will the Clerk please read the title of the bills?
Bill 1425, ordinance directing the Allegheny County Board of Elections to place before the qualified voters of the city of Pittsburgh at the 2025 May primary election, a referendum question. Shall the Pittsburgh Home Rule Charter, Article I, Home Rule Powers definitions, be supplemented by adding a new section, 105, Local Governance, by prohibiting the discrimination on the basis of race, religion, ancestry, sex, sexual orientation, age, gender, gender identity or expression, disability, place of birth, national origin or association, or affiliation with any nation or foreign state in conducting business of the city? And Bill 1426, ordinance directing the Allegheny County Board of Elections to place before the qualified voters of the city of Pittsburgh at the 2025 May primary election, a referendum question. Shall the Pittsburgh Home Rule Charter, Article I, Home Rule Powers definitions, be supplemented by adding a new section, 104, Amendments to Charter, by prohibiting the use of the Home Rule Charter Amendment process to add duties or obligations beyond the lawful scope of the city's authority?
I seem to have misplaced the speaker last. Yeah. Oh, never mind. I got it. Thank you, Madam Clerk. And again, for the record, we're joined by councilmembers Deb Gross, Barb Warwick, and Bobby Wilson. And so similar to the last bill that was before us, I'll read two names at a time so that everyone knows who's on deck. Each person who has registered will have three minutes to speak, whether you're in person or joining us online. And we'll ask that you say your name and neighborhood for the record, or the organization that you're representing, if that's the case. And those who haven't registered will get an opportunity to speak, but again, you will have one minute to speak in that case, after we've exhausted the registered speakers. If I call your name and you're not present, we'll go through that list again, and so you'll get an opportunity. Currently, we have 21 registered speakers. And our first registered speaker is Jeremy Kazaz.
Good afternoon, members of council, Jeremy Kazaz from Squirrel Hill. I'd like to thank Councilperson Strasburger for introducing Bills 1425 and 1426, and for the rest of you who introduced them or intend to support them. We've now seen in Pittsburgh regular attempts to abuse the Home Rule Charter Amendment process to force the city to take actions that would target specific communities and more broadly impair the ability for the city of government to function in day-to-day operations. Both of these bills serve to clarify the Home Rule Charter Amendment process so that it cannot be abused to cause harm to our city. My understanding of 1426 is that it will prevent the use of the Home Rule Charter Amendment process to send advisory questions to the voters. In 2008, the Pennsylvania Supreme Court upheld the legality of a similar provision that exists in Allegheny County's Administrative Code. Here in Pennsylvania, the Commonwealth generally disfavors governing by ballot referendum, as opposed to governing through representative democracy. The act of sending certain questions to the ballot can cause irreparable harm to the electorate, even those provisions that are obviously unconstitutional under the U.S. Constitution, Pennsylvania Constitution, or Pennsylvania law. We saw last summer with a provision that was almost definitely illegal, that it squarely targeted the Jewish community and Jewish communal institutions. I hope you support 1426, because it otherwise does not curtail any ability for this council to legislate in its day-to-day operations, but it does help add safeguards to harms that will cause, that can be caused to communities within the city. I also strongly support the passage of Bill 1425, because we should not be allowing any ballot measures that target certain people, nonprofits, or companies based on any of the classes described in the bill as amended. A strong anti-discrimination provision sets the tone that this is not a city that will tolerate consideration of discriminatory laws of this type. So I hope City Council will unanimously submit both of these bills to the voters, so that they will be added to the ballot this coming spring to safeguard communities and also the financial stability of our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Marjorie Mann, followed by Ayesha Zuni.
Thank you. My name is Marjorie Mann, and I'm a resident of Squirrel Hill. First, I want to thank Councilmember Strasburger and the other cosponsors. I also want to urge everybody else to please vote yes to send these to the ballot. Now, for the third time in less than a year, local quote-unquote activists are trying to exploit our democracy to promote a hateful political agenda. They want to use gaps in our city processes to put a deeply flawed and biased referendum question on the ballot, one that promotes misinformation, hate, and bigotry. So first, I'm asking the council to vote yes on 1426, rather. This ordinance is about strengthening the legal function of our local, legal foundation of our local governance. It is about protecting Pittsburgh from being derailed by special interest groups that are more interested in advancing their narrow politically-charged agendas than in addressing the real needs of our city and what should be the focus of council. We know that Pittsburgh, like every city, has very limited resources. Those resources should be focused on issues that directly benefit our community, keeping our neighborhoods safe, affordable housing, reducing homelessness, and others. Right now, especially right now, we cannot afford to allow Pittsburgh to be pulled off course by politically motivated groups pushing divisive agendas that prevent us from keeping our communities safe. I would also urge council to vote yes on 1425. By doing this, you are reaffirming Pittsburgh's commitment to being a city that embraces diversity and stands against all forms of discrimination. It sends a clear message that in Pittsburgh, we value equality, fairness, respect, regardless of background or identity. This is a message that everyone in our community needs to hear, especially at a time when we see discrimination and bigotry so boldly rearing their ugly heads. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ayesha Zuni, followed by Adi Lord.
Hello, everyone. I'm Ayesha Zuni. I'm from Brooklyn. I'm here to talk against 1425, not because I don't like it, but because I don't think it goes far enough. What I wanted to say is, by prohibiting the discrimination on the basis of race, religion, ancestry, sex, sexual orientation, age, gender identity or expression, disability, place of birth, national origin or association or affiliation with any nation or foreign state in conducting business of the city, even if that nation is doing genocide, apartheid, ethnic cleansing, or human rights violation. I think that sentence should be added at the end of that. I think that sometimes should be added at the end of that. So it's clear to everybody that this ordinance referendum is made to make sure that we're doing business with everybody. Human rights violation, sure, we do that with that. We do business with these people. Ethnic cleansing, it's not happening here. Why not? Of course, I'm joking, but the point is, if Pittsburgh did not stand against apartheid, against genocide, we're seeing the Israeli forces forced to release people who collect rainwater, the people who forage herbs from the hills of the West Bank. Israel is being forced to release these people. And they're not being forced to release these people by diplomacy or public pressure. They're forced to release these people by action of military. And if we don't, as Pittsburgh, push for a boycott for apartheid, then the only way forward for peace in the Middle East would only be by the sword. And I don't want that. I want peace, public pressure for peace, and I want Pittsburgh to be on the forefront of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Adi Lord, followed by Bram Reichbaum.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Adi Lord. I'm a resident of Greenfield and the founder and president of Project for Responsive Democracy, which is the fiscal sponsor for Not on Our Dime. I'm mostly coming today, actually continue to be in support of 1425 and 1426. The one thing that I am curious about and wanting to make sure, mostly as a resident, more so than anything else, is around 1425 of the unprecedented use of a protected class with affiliation with any nation or foreign government. As far as I'm aware, there's not another place in public policy that uses that as a protected class. So before moving forward, I would hope or want to see if you have considered some of the possible consequences of that or explored it at all. So not being somebody that is particularly familiar with project labor agreements, but is curious of is there an impact on PLAs? And what would that be if the city were to receive a bid for a city project that might use foreign workers? What could that mean for the local labor? Does this mean that the city doesn't care whether tech hardware, like computer chips, might come from China or a U.S. company? Could the city distinguish or make a decision on a bid based off of that? Especially thinking of something like water infrastructure that's vital to our lives if that was used within that system? Just as a question. And does it mean similarly, if software, depending on where software is developed or if there was a need for the city to develop custom software, if we received bids from, say, Estonia or from graduates of CMU, and they were either similar or the Estonian bid came in lower, would you be able to make a decision to choose a local vendor? So I think that that's largely wanting to make sure that any unforeseen consequences of these bills and doing something for what seems to be the first time, or that you've checked with the law department to see what that might mean for the bidding process, mostly to make sure that the city's resources are used in a way that is responsible. Thanks.
Thank you. Next up is Bram Reichbaum, followed by Karen Galore.
Thank you again. My name is Bram Richbaum, Squirrel Hill South. I'm here to explain why I support the proposals that the council has brought to us, that we're considering, that would pour some cold water on the well-intended other ballot question that the Not on Our Dime Coalition has brought for consideration also. I think if we're going to talk about this, it is only right to start with how we're all appalled that more people are dying than ever in the 100 years of this conflict right now. Mostly because right now, as usual, Israel is retaliating heedlessly and egregiously to what were, as usual, senselessly cruel Palestinian provocations and in response to trauma, in response to other trauma. And I'm sure everyone here is sick of it and wants it to end. Over the past year and a half, I've spent a lot of time thinking about this, reading about this, arguing about this, and I have no idea how to make it better. I'm not sure if we want one side to run out of the weapons it's been using so it either resorts to different and even crazier weapons and schemes, or it becomes more vulnerable to someone else's. I don't know if we have the standing to demand another country with a substantially democratic system chill out when there are so many people just on the other side of their borders who've sworn to kill them all one day, even though I know they have a good cause for upset. I don't know what to do. And I hope I'm not offending anybody when I say I haven't met anybody else who seems to like they know what to do, at least not after someone asks them, okay, and then what? I really think we're all sincere about trying, but this is actually above our pay grade. And the best we can do is model a better attitude for understanding each other and for compromise. And I feel like we just held two elections about this very issue, and we have a lot of, don't want to have a whole mayor's race about this. We in the city have little idea how to provide the affordable housing that comes first in our Home Rule Charter, or how to keep our streets safe, or whether we have a $4 million surplus or a $20 million deficit. And I think that we get to worry about those issues for a while. We have to. No one else is going to do it for us. We don't even have a newspaper in this town that is equipped to help out right now. I don't want to get mail about this issue. I don't want to get phone calls and text messages and door knocks and have to see ads on my computer and on buses around town about this issue. I don't want to be called Nazi any more often than I currently am. I would think that most people on both sides of this issue could actually agree with that sentiment. And I have a lot more. And if you want to hear more, please like and subscribe. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Karen Galore, followed by Roseanne Levine. Okay, so we will come back to Karen. And Roseanne, you're up next, followed by Aparna Nagam.
Good afternoon. My name is Roseanne Levine, and I support ordinances 1425 and 26. First of all, I want to thank all on City Council and all city officials and employees for the hard work that you do every day to make our city run. Thank you, Councilmember Strasburger, for introducing, and Councilmembers Lavelle, Sharland, Coghill, and Wilson for cosponsoring, and Councilmember Kail Smith for voting yes in the preliminary vote. I appeal to all on council to support both measures. On the surface, these ordinances may seem superfluous. Why should we need to vote to amend the Home Charter to follow the law and reject discrimination? The answer is, we need to do this so that you and all the outstanding hard worker city employees can do your job, get stuff done, run this city, keep our residents safe, and work toward uniting Pittsburghers in our goals of having a safe, thriving city. Instead of allowing a very small but vocal minority to hijack these goals by trying to implement Cold War-era Soviet tactics of coming back repeatedly to try to implement boycotts against any companies that have any contracts with any country that someone has decided to demonize by applying abhorrent labels, you need to ensure that our residents have access to the best essential products and services to provide vital functions. These ordinances allow you to head off the threats. They're at least cheered, if not outright manipulated, by international adversaries who would love to see pieces of our country divided over any issue whatsoever, especially this one. Not long ago, when I was still working as a nurse practitioner, my 17-year-old patient tried opiates and overdosed. Because the city first responders had in a lock zone, she lived. Multiply her by hundreds. We need our overdose death rates to continue to decrease. Additionally, when the city needs to make any purchases, such as essential equipment or enter into contracts with providers of essential services, we cannot allow the process to get bogged down or precluded because the city controller has to comb through every contract that a company has to see if we can deal with that company. We cannot allow a small but vocal minority to single out and demonize one country, one people or group, and incapacitate our city in the process. If you follow international news, you're aware that our world is filled with tragic and horrendous armed conflicts featuring the worst of human behavior, seemingly ignored by this small but vocal minority as they instead choose to demonize one particular country and group trying to defend against an existential threat, even though the ballot initiative they are trying to introduce would apply to many countries, really. But we in Pittsburgh are better than this. We're stronger than hate. We work for solutions. We don't demonize. We vitalize. We don't divide. We provide. These ordinances represent a refusal to get bamboozled. Thank you again for everything that you do every day.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Aparna Nagam, followed by Laura Turner.
Hi, good afternoon. Are you able to hear me now?
We can hear you, yes.
This is Aparna Nagam. I live in Highland Park. This is regarding the Non-Discrimination Ordinance 1425, which I support, and an associated amendment introduced by council recently. Last week, Councilman Coghill brought up a great point about whether the question is very clear or if it might be misleading. And while I agree it seems straightforward, I noticed that the inclusion of person and entity is not included in the question. And I feel that could be misleading to voters. Therefore, I encourage you to amend the question to read as follows. Shall the Pittsburgh Home Rule Charter, Article I, Home Rule Powers Definitions, be supplemented by adding a new Section 105 Local Governance by prohibiting the discrimination of people or entities on the basis of race, religion, ancestry, sex, sexual orientation, age, gender identity or expression, disability, place of birth, national origin or association or affiliation with any nation or foreign state in conducting business of the city? On a different point, it was mentioned last week that our city would, quote, grind to a halt, unquote, if we were to pass and enforce certain referendums, such as the one proposed by Not on Our Dime. I do not agree that it would grind to a halt or prohibit the city of Pittsburgh from continuing to do business with the arbitrary list of companies mentioned last week. It would, however, create boundaries and rules to enforce ethical business, which is the point of a referendum, and to let Pittsburgh city residents tell the city what's important and how the city governs. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Laura Turner, followed by Callie DeZabato. We will come back to Laura. And next is Callie DeZabato, followed by Julie Paris. We'll come back to Callie. And Julie Paris is up, followed by Chaim Ginnach.
Hello, my name is Julie Paris. I'm a resident of Squirrel Hill. Professionally, I'm the regional director of Stand With Us. Stand With Us is an international, nonpartisan, nonprofit organization that fights antisemitism and educates about Israel. I'd like to just sort of reiterate what has already been said here today in support of ordinances 1425, 1426, specifically by Marjorie, Jeremy, and Roseanne, and other speakers. I'm asking all council members to support these resolutions, including my own councilwoman, Barb Warwick, to consider it. I think a nine-to-zero vote on these would be amazing. Supporting these resolutions, which send a strong message that Pittsburgh remains committed to combating discrimination in all its forms. These resolutions help ensure that our focus remains on issues that directly impact our city, supporting our residents, keeping our community safe, and addressing the local challenges that matter most to constituents. This is really about staying focused on what matters and also stopping the spread of misinformation that we have heard so far today and far too many times in the past. The consequences of this referendum are not just political. They are practical. If passed, it would disrupt essential city services. Nearly every piece of technology that we rely on, whether in healthcare, public safety, or city infrastructure, as Councilwoman Strasburger so aptly mentioned last week, include Israeli innovation. If the referendum were to pass, it would make it nearly impossible to conduct business as usual, driving up costs and potentially costing the city millions of dollars by limiting our access to the global marketplace at a time when our city is already struggling financially. We cannot allow this divisive referendum to undermine our city's ability to protect its residents fairly. By adopting these ordinances, we can protect Pittsburgh from the dangers of misinformation and discrimination. We can ensure that our government remains focused on serving the people without being distracted by harmful political agendas that threaten to tear our community apart. I urge you all to support these resolutions and stand up for the values that make Pittsburgh a welcoming, fair, and safe city. Thank you.
Thank you. We have our next speaker, followed by Audrey Glickman.
Good afternoon, members of the council. My name is Chaim Ginnach. You did an excellent job pronouncing it. Thank you. Everybody calls me Yitzhak, so it's fine. I am the rabbi of Congregation Shari Torah on Murray Avenue. Our synagogue represents a community of about 500 residents, of Pittsburgh mostly and Squirrel Hill. And I'm here today on behalf of my community to urge you to vote yes on ordinances 1425 and 1426. 1425 is straightforward. It's about rejecting all forms of discrimination, and that should be a standard we all support. As a city, we must remain committed to fairness and equality for all of our residents. Ordinance 1426 is equally important. It will safeguard our city from being distracted by special interest groups pushing politically extreme agendas that do nothing to serve the people of Pittsburgh. Virtue signaling, which these distractions often represent, diverts attention and resources away from the real work that needs to be done, keeping our city safe, supporting our communities, and addressing local issues that matter most to residents. Councilmember Warwick, you represent my district, and I appreciate that you've visited our synagogue. You've seen firsthand the values that our community holds dear. I ask you to keep in mind that many of us at Shari Torah believe these ordinances are essential for protecting the integrity and the focus of our city government. I want to thank Councilwoman Strasburger for introducing these ordinances, and Councilmembers Lavelle, Sharland, Coghill, and Wilson for cosponsoring, and Councilperson Kail Smith for voting yes in the preliminary vote. I hope that the rest of the council, especially my councilwoman, Barb Warwick, will vote yes on both measures to ensure our city government remains focused and effective. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Audrey Glickman, followed by Ben Case.
Audrey Glickman, from Greenfield. Honorable counselors, thank you for the bills being discussed today. I'm in favor of all three. On these two bills, let me be blunt on the opposition. Hatred by proxy, especially by disrupting the function of municipal government, is not freedom of speech. It accomplishes nothing positive to mandate that the city BDS any country, including Israel. War is never good, but as my father and grandfather would have said, sometimes it's necessary. I see my friends, neighbors, and colleagues supporting the terrorists who ransacked one of the most liberal neighborhoods in Israel, murdering 1,200, raping, maiming, disfiguring, burning, pillaging, and taking hostages who are still held 485 days later, livestreaming it all to manipulate others around the world into despising the whole country of Israel. My colleagues have succumbed to their propaganda. Their petition saves no babies. It stops no wars. It only serves those who would deny the Jews, like the Yazidis, the Uighurs, and so many others, one tiny place in which they can live safely. The attack was a full-fledged act of war on Israel by Gaza rather than just the usual constant day-in-and-day-out lobbing of bombs and building of tunnels. Yet, our hearts should bleed for the attackers? We already have state law against such BDS initiatives, Act 163 of 2016. Yet, my friends coerce our neighbors into signing by saying that the petitions are a solution. a solution to some unjust war. War is never just, and neither is inflicting this upon the city of Pittsburgh. I want to tell them, go ahead and hate us. Do it out in the open, the left as well as the right. We can take it. And you know what? We'll still be there for you when they come for you, and they will. But please, don't disrupt city government. And don't say this is somehow stopping genocide, because the petitions do no such thing. They spread the same old propaganda, otherwise they'd have gone after China first. Council's two bills call out the inappropriateness of this initiative. We should name this the Don't Clot Up City Government Law. Again, thank you for all three of these bills. Please move them forward onto the ballot.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ben Case, followed by Rabbi Jeffrey Myers.
Good afternoon. I'm Ben Case. I'm a resident of lovely Fineview. I spoke last week as an organizer with the Not on Our Dime referendum campaign about my support for 1425 and 26, and I said I hoped they were not intended to counter our effort. It seems to have been made pretty clear since then that that was the intent. I think that's unfortunate, but it doesn't change my assessment that there's no major conflicts between what you're proposing and what we are, but it does raise some concerns. Councilperson Strasburger, you spoke at length last week about an amendment to your original proposal, which had initially left out a number of protected categories of people, including sex, gender, and sexual orientation. You described it as an embarrassing oversight, considering your history of antidiscrimination work in these areas, but you didn't actually explain how the oversight got made. Instead, you talked about Not on Our Dime, and you went on to list a number of companies that may or may not be involved in objectionable behavior that you don't think Pittsburgh would be able to divest from. And I think that discussion really was telling, because like the initial oversight, it seems as though you're not actually focusing on the issue at hand here. I'm worried that you're trying to use it to counter our campaign. And I think the people of Pittsburgh really deserve your all's full attention to things like antidiscrimination in this moment, and I hope there's not other things that are being overlooked, because you're not thinking about this in itself, you're thinking about how you can use it. For example, councilperson Warwick raised a good point, considering 1426 last week, about Pittsburgh potentially painting ourselves into a corner when it comes to compliance with federal regulations at a time when the federal government is, you know. And so, you know, you sort of dismiss that, councilperson Strasburger, but I hope that you're sure that that wouldn't be an issue, and I hope you all are giving the full attention to these that they deserve, because as I say, the people of Pittsburgh really deserve your full attention to issues of antidiscrimination and compliance with federal law in our political moment, not just trying to use them as a political football to stop our campaign. And speaking of doing homework, a lot of the discussion last week also made me concerned that you haven't read our proposed legislation closely. I hope you have. I have an example here. This is a petition. The question's on the front. The full legislation we're proposing is on the back, where we make it clear that the divestment practices would be where possible, right? The diversion of funding. And so, you know, when you talk about grinding the city to a halt, no, we address that. We say where it's possible. If you determine it's not possible to do that in some instance, that's okay. That's why we have the transparency that people just should be able to know which companies we're not able to divert resources from. And finally, I just wanted to say a brief word about divisiveness, because there was a lot of talk last week about divisiveness and bringing people together. I want to be clear, we're not creating the divisiveness. There is divisiveness out there. We're trying to find a productive and democratic outlet for a lot of frustrations that are there. We're not creating that. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rabbi Jeffrey Myers, followed by Rebecca El Hasid.
Good afternoon, members of council. Thank you for the opportunity to address you. I'm here in support of both 1425 and 1426. I'd like to thank my own councilperson, Strasburger, for your leadership in that, for the consortium of other councilpeople that you've brought into, what should seem like something that we shouldn't need to do in this day and age, to have antidiscrimination laws at this point. You would think that common sense dictates to us. We should be beyond that. I live six blocks from Mr. Rogers' house, and I'm thinking, if he would hear this, he'd be rolling his grave, saying, that's not the Pittsburgh that I was on QED on for such a long time, and I think he would be disappointed to hear that we even need to discuss these things. A year and a half ago, I spent two months of my life across the street in the federal courthouse, where finally a jury of my peers confirmed that my rights as a Jew to practice my faith were violated. I fear for those same sorts of things when it comes to the subject of antisemitism. I thought that the jury trial would have ended, the whole subject of antisemitism existing in Pittsburgh. We shouldn't be known as the city where the worst antisemitic act in the history of the United States ever occurred, but sadly, we are. Are we going to continue to be a place that harbors all forms of discrimination, including antisemitism? And that's a fear that not only I have, but the vast Jewish community of 50,000 persons in the greater Pittsburgh area still continue to have. When you single out one nation on this planet and pick on one nation, whereas the South Sudan, there's no conversation of, now that's the worst humanitarian disaster on this planet. For some reason, that's being ignored. The Uighur are being eliminated. That's being ignored. There are so many examples around the planet. When you pick on one country, and one country alone, as my predecessor was addressing, there's one word answer for that. It's called antisemitism. I will no longer tolerate, and I have not tolerated, antisemitism in Pittsburgh. It is unwelcome here. Any form of discrimination, no matter who the group is, must be unwelcome in Pittsburgh. Are we to be a city that welcomes forms of discrimination, or are we one to say, it's unwelcome, go find another home? That's the question before you as a city council. I would hope that there would be unanimity from the entire council for both 1425 and 1426. Anything less than unanimity says to me, and to many in the city, that we don't have the support of the entire city council to eliminate discrimination, and to me, that would be intolerable. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rebecca El Hasid, followed by Jody Russ.
Hi, I'm Rebecca El Hasid. I live in Barb Warwick's district, and I am not going to repeat everything that was said. I agree with what Jeremy Kazaz and Marjorie Mann said. I'm here in support of 1426 and 1425. I'll just add that 1426 does not restrict, or 1425 does not restrict, the city from following any federal or state guidance on restricting business with particular countries. It does not affect our preferences for union labor, and Part 1, Title 62 of the Pennsylvania Procurement Code allows us to continue to give preference to local bidders for city business. I think it's also very interesting, and I just want to point out, I think, very telling to the problem that we're experiencing as a community, that there are people who came and spoke in favor of these two ordinances just a couple days ago, and without the text of the ordinances having changed, have now realizing that they might no longer be able to target Jewish people, are now suddenly against these ordinances. I think that's very important to notice. I want to thank Councilwoman Strasburger for bringing these important ordinances to the table, and councilmembers Lavelle, Sharlin, Coghill, Wilson for cosponsoring, and councilperson Teresa Kell Smith for voting yes in the preliminary vote. I ask all councilmembers, especially my councilperson, Councilwoman Warwick, to support both measures to prevent discrimination and ensure that city resources are being used to help the city residents who need it the most. I also want to echo what Councilwoman Strasburger said last week, that our city should be spending our time on critical issues like housing, homelessness, the future of downtown. I don't think we should let our government be hijacked by people's personal agendas, especially with the current federal administration. We want our city government focused on protecting city residents and not getting embroiled in lawsuits and wasting time and resources. I'd also like to share a couple of the words of Aziz Abu Sarah, a Palestinian peace activist whom Mayor Ganey brought to Pittsburgh just a couple weeks ago. At Mayor Ganey's event at Pitt, Abu Sarah explained how boycott initiatives like the Not on Our Dime one actually support extremists. They not only hurt our city's ability to function, but Abu Sarah talked at the Ganey event about how they hurt the peace process itself, reinforcing a narrative that is binary with two sides, both of which get dehumanized in the process, and boycotting the groups that are doing the very peace building that we all hope to see, and that Mayor Ganey was hoping to promote with the event he had a couple weeks ago. Please vote yes on both 1425 and 1426.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jody Russ, followed by Aviva Lebowski.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Meera Jody Russ. I live in Squirrel Hill. I am asking councilmembers, including my councilperson, Barb Warwick, to vote yes on ordinances 1425 and 1426. At a time when our federal government is being dismantled, and our congressional leaders remain largely quiet, when I am consumed by worry for my trans and immigrant neighbors and friends, we need to ensure that our city is a place that is free of discrimination and marginalization. And our city must be able to go about its business without restrictions placed on it by radical groups. We need Pittsburgh to be a bastion of good, to focus on critical issues like housing and protecting the most vulnerable. Please vote yes on both ordinances 1425 and 1426.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Aviva Lebowski, followed by Sai Patel.
Good afternoon. Thank you to all the councilpeople for the hard work you do. It's a thankless job sometimes, and it's very appreciated. My name is Aviva Lebowski. I live in Councilwoman Warwick's district. I am asking you all to support ordinances 1425 and 1426. I really, I'm not going to belabor the points. I think that Rabbis Ginnach and Rabbi Myers, Roseanne and Audrey did a beautiful job, and Meera just now talking about all of the varied reasons why these ordinances are important and make sense right now. I do just want to say that at this moment in history, when minorities and people who are oppressed are really under attack, this nondiscrimination piece makes so much sense and really needs to be codified so that we can rely on it in the coming years. I am curious, Councilwoman Warwick, why you have not already supported this bill, or the ordinances, and I thank you, Councilwoman Strasburger, for introducing them, members Lavelle, Sharlin, Coghill, and Wilson for cosponsoring, councilperson Kell Smith for voting yes in the preliminary vote, and ask that you all vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Sai Patel, followed by David Knoll.
Good afternoon. My name is Sai Patel, and I have been a resident of Pittsburgh area over a decade. I am deeply engaged in the Hindu community's cultural and social activities and working to serve the local Pittsburgh community. I strongly support 1425 and 1426, which addresses the critical gap in the city's ordinance. These measures will help ensure that city government remains focused on its essential work rather than being diverted by extremist agendas that do not serve the broader public interest. Reciting all the forms of discrimination in fundamental principle is a fundamental principle, particularly in the time when antisemitism, Hindu hate, and other expressions of hate are on the rise. While today you have heard from the leaders of Jewish community, whom the Hindu community stands firmly alongside, this legislation is equally important to my community, and we fully support Councilmember Strasburgers and cosponsors in advocating these resolutions, and urge all the councilmembers to vote in favor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is David Knoll, followed by Gregory Smith, our final registered speaker.
My name is David Knoll from Squirrel Hill. I know many of you, I've spoken to many of you about this issue. First of all, I want to come out in support of both ordinances, and I echo what Audrey, Roseanne, Rabbi Myers, Chaim Ginnach, Jeremy, Julie, Marjorie, Ram, and Rebecca said, so I'm not going to belabor you with repeating the points that they said. I want to talk more from the heart. I believe that the Not on Our Dime referendum is divisive. Our community fully feels that it is divisive, and we could go on and on. I've spoken to many of you in private about examples of why it is, but there's a better way. There's a better way that the mayor himself has tried to initiate, where he's brought speakers that are Palestinian, that are Israeli, to come and speak for peace, not for division. The JCC has also brought in speakers that I had the honor of moderating that also came in support of peace, knowing that there is hurt, there's hurt going, you know, we have to acknowledge there's hurt going on on the Israeli side, there's certainly hurt going on the Palestinian side. There is, this is a problem going on for both sides and for the world right now, but the way to help solve this is not with more division, not with referendums that cause more division, it is through speaking to each other. I can say personally that I've reached out to my Palestinian brothers and tried to hear their side, and we speak, and we don't agree on a lot, but we see each other as people, and this is what the mayor has tried to bring to Pittsburgh, speakers that say, hey, we're not going to agree. And if any of you were at that speech a couple weeks ago, on the mayor's initiative, they didn't agree on everything, but that's okay. But the key is to speak and learn from each other and say, hey, we need to solve this problem, and we need to come together some way so that our kids don't have to deal with this. And the way not to do that is through referendums that cause more division, make communities scared. Again, I could say that the majority of the Jewish community is scared from the Not on Our Dime referendum, so they might say that it's not divisive. I could tell you, as a representative from my community, I'm sorry if I feel so passionate about it, but it is hurting our community. We need you to support these two ordinances so that people do not have to go through this, that we have a safe city for all, that we have a city where we build bridges, where we speak to each other, and we can come together, even if we're different, and even if we have differences, we come together, we learn from each other, and we get past it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last registered speaker is Gregory Smith, and then we'll start over with some who had registered but did not get to speak.
Hello, my name is Gregory Smith. I'm a resident of Pittsburgh. I will be speaking from Benjamin Netanyahu's speech to the UN. And now I have a question for you, and I pose that question to you. What choice will you make? Will you stand? Will your nation stand with Israel? Will you stand with democracy and peace, or will you stand with Iran, a brutal dictatorship that subjugates its own people and exports terrorism around the globe? In this battle between good and evil, there must be no, I can't speak. When you stand with Israel, you stand for your own values and your own interests. Yes, we're defending ourselves, but we're also defending you against a common enemy that through violence and terror seeks to destroy our way of life. So there should be no confusion about this, but unfortunately, there is a lot of it in many countries. And in this very hall, as I've just heard, good is portrayed as evil, and evil is portrayed as good. We see this moral confusion when Israel is falsely accused of genocide, when we defend ourselves against enemies who try to commit genocide against us. We see this too when Israel is absurdly accused by the ICC prosecutor of deliberately starving Palestinians in Gaza. What an absurdity. We helped bring in 700,000 tons of food into Gaza. That's more than 3,000 calories a day for every man, woman, and child in Gaza. We see this moral confusion when Israel is falsely accused of deliberately targeting civilians. We don't want to see a single innocent person die. That's always a tragedy, and that's why we do so much to minimize civilian casualties, even as our own enemies use our civilians as shields. And no army has done what Israel is doing to minimize civilian casualties. We drop flyers. We send text messages. We make phone calls by the millions to ensure that the Palestinian civilians get out of harm's way. We spare no effort in this noble pursuit. We see yet another profound moral confusion when self-described progressives march against the democracy of Israel. Don't they support? Don't they realize they support the Iranian-backed goons in Tehran? And in Gaza, the goons who shot down protesters, murder women for not covering their hair, and hang gays in public squares? Some progressives. According to the US Director of National Intelligence, Iran funds and fuels many of the protesters against Israel. Who knows? Maybe some of the protesters are even many of the protesters outside of this building now. Ladies and gentlemen, King Solomon, who reigned in our eternal capital Jerusalem 3,000 years ago, proclaimed something that is familiar to all of you. He said, there is nothing new under the sun. Well, in an age of space travel, quantum physics, and artificial intelligence... Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move to the top of those who had registered but didn't speak. Is Karen Galore with us?
I am. My apologies for not being able to get off mute earlier.
Not a problem.
Good afternoon. My name is Karen Galore, and I am also from the Squirrel Hill neighborhood. And I am here today in support of both ordinances 1425 and 1426. Of course, I'd like to state that I agree with everything that Rebecca Alhassid, Marjorie Mann, Jerry McCazas, Rabbi Myers, Rabbi Ganach, and many others so eloquently stated before me. I just wanted to add some very brief points that I learned from Nat Yap while he was praising city councillors Strasburger, Lavelle, Wilson, Coghill, and Charline for cosponsoring these ordinances in order to keep our city running. And he very astutely pointed out examples of products that would fall under boycott efforts, such as parts of police cars and many of the prescription medications, particularly being prescribed for those with substance abuse disorder, that city employees and residents rely on. So I just wanted to state that I agree entirely with Nat, that we need to do the work of protecting our city from attempts to make our government less able to advocate for and protect the residents of the city of Pittsburgh. I'd like to thank city councillors Strasburger, Lavelle, Wilson, Coghill, Charline, and Kail Smith for their support. And I'd like to ask my councilperson Barb Warwick, along with councilmembers Mosley and Gross, to stand up for city residents and support ordinances 1425 and 1426. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move on back to Laura Turner. Is Laura with us? I don't see Laura. Do we have Callie DeZabato? Okay. Well, we have exhausted our list of registered speakers. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak? You can come and approach the podium. You will have one minute. It goes by quickly. So please state your name and neighborhood.
I know. My name is Crystal Campos, and I don't live in the city yet. I want to be thanking Councilwoman Erica Strasburger for this 1425 and 26. And I will urge to vote yes because I'm just going to say very shortly, a house that cannot keep it together and that are fighting inside, it's a house that itself cannot stand. So I know about discrimination for multiple cases. And I know when I see something that means to be divisive. And this we can not, as human beings, permit it to be done. We have to be, especially in this age in time, be together, be supportive of each other instead of looking for ways of punishing the other side. We cannot decide on other foreign states. We have not the capacity. So thank you very much for letting me speak.
Thank you very much. Are there any further speakers wishing to approach the podium? Any further speakers? Seeing none, I'll now return it to council members. Are there any council members wishing to speak? Councilmember Wilson.
Yes, thank you, Councilperson Strasburger. And thank you for your efforts on putting this together, especially this hearing, but also bills 1425 and 1426 for the ballot referendum. Looking forward to supporting this final vote tomorrow and looking forward to seeing what the voters think about these two referendum questions on the ballot. Appreciate everyone here coming to speak. I could probably go at length in terms of what I think about this. And I don't think I could eloquently speak to it. I think that everyone here who, basically, most everyone's comments in terms of people that are in favor of this, I think you said it very well. And I think that at this time, especially in Pittsburgh's time, that we definitely have to focus on the financial future of the city. And to see an effort like this that proposes two questions that a lot will say, a lot of people will say that it's in response to the "No War Crime on Our Dime" referendum question that's being proposed. You know, I think the way I feel about it is, I mean, it's just pretty disheartening to see the amount of people show up in support of the referendum questions. I'm sorry, I'm getting that backwards. Basically, it's disheartening to see an effort like this go forward, meaning the "No War Crime on Our Dime" in a time whenever there should be a lot of healing in our communities, especially whenever I hear the words of Rabbi Jeffrey Myers come to the podium and speak. I think that speaks volumes. And I've been to several memorial services in Squirrel Hill in response to the terrible tragedies that have happened. And I foolhardily agree that this is not the time to stoke any fear in anyone, in any community, and that it is not appropriate to be cute about it. I don't think that... I think that there is a sense of cuteness that people feel about this. And I think that it's very much deserved to have a response like this. I kind of thought for a little bit that I might not say anything about this. But as time goes on, I don't think this has any place... I don't think Pittsburgh voters should have to be faced with all these questions. I think they should be concerned about whether or not their steps are going to be repaired so they can walk to the bus, and whether or not that bus is going to show up on time. I don't think they should be concerned whether or not we can do business with Microsoft or other companies that have been mentioned here. So I think it's critical that we not only support a referendum question that would stop any discrimination. And it's also important that we support a ballot referendum question that wouldn't force the city of Pittsburgh to go beyond our scope. So I said that as eloquently as I could put it, just kind of listening to everyone here. But I think that the audience that's listening to me now put it best. So appreciate your time today.
Thank you, Councilman. Any further comments from members? Councilmember Warwick.
Sure, thank you. And thanks everyone for coming. I know, I thank everyone here, pretty much. I say often that this issue has probably taken up more of my time since October 7th than any other issue. Obviously, representing Squirrel Hill. And, you know, and I wish that I could make all of my constituents happy on this, but I can't. There's not anything that I'm going to say that's going to make everyone happy. In fact, probably make no one happy. You know, as far as the sort of two sides on this, and I don't think there really needs to be two sides, right? I think this is a much more nuanced conversation for most people. But I wish that every statement, every tweet, and I know, you know, it's not... Would, you know, would acknowledge that October 7th was a horrific crime. It was a terrorist attack. And that Hamas is an authoritarian organization that does, you know, does not seem to have the well-being of the average Palestinian in mind. I also wish that every statement would acknowledge that the response of the right-wing Netanyahu government in Gaza is equally horrific and that it has left tens of thousands of innocent Gazans dead, displaced, and hungry, and also left hostages to be, you know, trapped for a year and a half and still in danger if they are not dead already. You know, that the leadership on both sides of this conflict are harming innocents on both sides of this conflict. I wish that, you know, every statement would acknowledge that a love of Israel and what it means to be a Zionist is a deep part of Jewish identity. Maybe not for every single Jewish person, but for the vast majority. And to equate that with, you know, being a supporter of genocide or equating it with Nazism and whatnot is, at best, mean and at worst, deeply anti-Semitic. I wish that there was an acknowledgement that Palestinians in Gaza and the West Bank and in Israel, who are under the protection of the Israeli government, whether that's occupation or not, do not have equal rights and that there is a massive imbalance of power and that that is not okay in a democracy. I wish that when the Jewish community here in Pittsburgh and elsewhere expresses fear about antisemitism, that we would all acknowledge that it is a type of hate that is so deeply ingrained in Western culture and around the world that whether we think we're being anti-Semitic or not, you know, it's just like racism and homophobia and sexism. It's like it's what's for breakfast, you know? And that we have seen it spike in shocking ways here in the city, whether that be violence or graffiti or defacing yard signs in the neighborhood. You know, this is intended to terrorize people, to make them afraid. And it is intended to make a very specific group of people afraid, and that is the Jewish community that is in and of itself anti-Semitic, regardless of the messaging, right? But I also think that it is entirely reasonable, because I include myself in this, for Pittsburghers to be appalled by what is being done to the people in Gaza using weapons supplied by the United States. And I think at the core, or, you know, and I know there are folks who disagree and feel like they're outside, but I think that at the core, this, you know, the protest around this conflict, that it is the anti-war movement of our time. And I, as an individual, do not believe that the way to peace is through violence. So that's kind of my thoughts on the issue as a whole. I've, you know, I've learned more about this and talked more about this than I could have ever imagined, you know, running for this seat. And I do hope that this ceasefire leads to something. I think at the end of the day, it will all have been just, you know, this was just a year and a half of death and destruction for nothing gained. I think that will be, unfortunately. And it is deeply saddening. And I know that that saddens everyone here too, regardless of what side of this you're on. So I'll just move on to the referendums. You know, the "No War Crimes on Our Dime." You know, it's no secret that I have friends who are involved in this movement, and I have had conversations. The language, you know, it makes it hard for the city to implement. You know, I have issues with, but, you know, I also feel when it comes to a ballot referendum, like the whole point of the ballot referendum, like the purpose of having it is for the people, you know, here in Pittsburgh, you know, when our elected leaders aren't doing what it is that we want them to do, whether that be all the way up from the President of the United States, all the way down to your city council member, including myself, right? Including myself, not willing to put something on the table that, you know, moves the needle or forces some kind of action, that that's what the ballot referendum is for. And so, you know, as a leader, I just... As a leader who has not been willing to do what the folks putting this together would have wanted me to do, it doesn't feel... I don't feel like I necessarily get to dictate what their referendum says and doesn't say, right? As far as the anti-discrimination piece, yeah, I mean, I support it. I'm a yes on that, there's no doubt. As for the other one, you know, to add duties beyond the lawful scope of the city's authority, I do want to clarify, and this has nothing to do with the conflict in this current environment that we are in, in Washington. My concern about this amendment is that it would hamstring, quite literally, our ability to enforce the previous amendment. By, I mean, you know, if the federal government makes it, you know, codifies discrimination, which, I mean, this is, I mean, what's going on, and I know you all know this, and what's going on is like nothing we've ever seen. That it just feels like this hamstrings our ability as a city, just us, right here, right here in Pittsburgh, in our little, you know, in our little space here to, you know, whether it's the people or whether it's city council sort of to put something on the table and say, no, we don't, you know, we don't agree with whatever it is that is coming down. So that's my hesitation on that one. That's why I abstained at the standing committee meeting. I think that's all that I have to say. Again, I thank everybody for coming out. And I know how incredibly hard this has been over the past year and a half. It's been hard for me. It's been hard for everyone here. And so I do appreciate the work that everyone has been doing and the passion that everyone feels on this. And, you know, I do wish that we could all come together and sort of work out something that we could do together as a city that would sort of meet everyone's needs. But I don't necessarily think that that's possible. So, you know, we'll see what happens. I don't, to be honest, and I'll let Councilwoman Strasburger speak to this. I'm still a little unclear on what this will mean on the ballot. Like, all three referendums are on the ballot, and if that's, you know, assuming the signatures move forward, what that looks like, you know, if one passes but the other doesn't, et cetera. But again, I also think that at the end, all of that will be figured out in the courts, one way or the other. So that's where it is for me. And, yeah, thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Councilmember. So I want to first thank all the speakers who took time to speak today. Because despite the stark differences on this consequential issue that cuts across both local and international, it is my sincere hope that we can continue to find the humanity within one another and perhaps one day have an exchange of dialogue that begins to bridge this divide that today feels so overwhelmingly wide and deep. I'm going to start my remarks on the sort of the legal and procedural end because that seems to be what a lot of, some of what we've heard today, and then move to the issues themselves, the core purpose of the bills themselves. So if you compare the text that the "No War Crimes on Our Dime" campaign seeks to place in our Home Rule Charter with the text that would be added by the successful adoption and ratification... with the text that would be added by the successful adoption and ratification of the council ordinances, it's clear to me, and clear to lawyers we've spoken to, that the two initiatives present a direct and irreconcilable conflict with one another. Council Bill 1425 would establish the following in a new Charter Section 105. "The City of Pittsburgh will not refuse to do business with or otherwise discriminate against any person or entity based on race, religion, ancestry, sex, sexual orientation, age, gender, identity, or expression, disability, place of birth, national origin, real or perceived, or connection, association, or affiliation with any nation or foreign state. Provided, however, nothing in this provision shall prohibit the city from complying with federal and/or state laws or directives prohibiting governmental units from doing business with foreign states against which the United States or State of Pennsylvania have issued sanctions or codifying regulations to ensure compliance with the same." The No War Crimes on Our Dime Amendment to the Home Rule Charter would set a new financial policy for the city as follows. "It is the policy of the City of Pittsburgh to divert spending and contracts away from any government actively engaging in or facilitating genocide, ethnic cleansing, or apartheid, as well as corporations doing business with these governments. To the greatest extent possible, all city departments shall ensure that public monies are not used to purchase goods or services from any company that does business with any government actively engaging in or facilitating genocide, ethnic cleansing, or apartheid." While this financial policy ostensibly applies to all foreign nations, there is only one specified as a presumptive violator in the Intent and Finding section of the amendment, and that's Israel. The proposed Section 1102 reads, "The electors have proprietary interest in formalizing the city's financial and investment policies to advance the city's moral standards on the basis that, A) Governments engaged in morally reprehensible behavior, such as Israel's ethnic cleansing of Palestinian civilians in Gaza and apartheid policies in the occupied Palestinian territories, are in stark misalignment with the values of Pittsburgh residents; and B) Corporations and entities developing tools and technologies used in acts of state violence against civilians increase the risk that such tools could be used against the city's residents." Putting aside, for now, the extraordinarily challenging question of what other foreign nations would trigger the Section 1102 and who exactly in city government would be charged with making that determination, the plain text of the competing proposals presents an immediate conflict. If both amendments were added to the Home Rule Charter, the city could not comply with a new Section 105 prohibition on boycotting individuals or businesses that operated in non-sanctioned countries, as Israel is not the subject of United States or Pennsylvania sanctions. The new Section 105 would forbid discrimination against certain foreign affiliated individuals and companies. The new Sections 1102 and 1103 would require such discrimination. The conflict between provisions would be irreconcilable. So that's the legal and procedural dimension of the argument. Let's talk about the purpose of Council Bill 1425. "In the past several months, we have now seen two ballot initiatives motivated by the principles of the boycott, divestment, and sanctions movement against Israel. These two campaigns have both, in slightly different but broadly similar ways, tried to force the City of Pittsburgh to adopt its own BDS policies in contracting procurement and investments. The current No War Crimes on Our Dime proposals that motivated Council Bill 1425 again would force the city to, quote, 'divert spending and contracts away from any government actively engaging in or facilitating genocide, ethnic cleansing, or apartheid, as well as corporations doing business with these governments.'" And again, specifically names only Israel such a government. "I know I read this list at Standing Committee last week, but it bears repetition to illustrate the ramifications of such a policy. Just some corporations who conduct business in Israel include: Amazon, Apple, Caterpillar, Cisco, Citibank, Coca-Cola, Dell, General Electric, Google/Alphabet, HP, IBM, Intel, JP Morgan Chase, McAfee, McDonald's, Micron, Microsoft, Monday.com, Nestle, Nvidia, Oracle, Pepsi, Qualcomm, Siemens, Tiva Pharmaceuticals, Toyota, Unilever, Volkswagen, Volvo." That's an incomplete list, but I think everyone gets the idea. We cannot run the city government without maintaining business relationships with many, if not most, of these companies. Frankly, I doubt many of us as individuals could sustain our daily lives without services such as Amazon deliveries, iPhones, Outlook Mail, computer networks and clouds, Google Search and Suite, privacy protection software, artificial intelligence, access to major banks, and so many more. We could perform the same exercise with companies operating in China, whose ongoing persecution of the Uighur population was recognized as genocide by both the Biden and Trump administrations, but that would consume the rest of the day, as nearly every major corporation's business touches China in some way. Surely, many if not most city business partners have an excess to China and by extension, the ruling Chinese Communist Party, who is arguably guilty of genocide and undoubtedly flagrant violator of human rights. I vigorously oppose the repressive policies of the Chinese government, but I'm not under the illusion that decoupling from the Chinese economy at the local or national level is a viable or effective response. I do understand that many people have serious and sincere concerns about the state of Israel's conduct during the war in Gaza, in previous military engagements, and with respect to the Palestinian population. I respect their freedom of conscience to hold these beliefs, and I support their freedoms of speech and expression to share them. What we cannot do, however, is allow the city to cripple itself in a futile attempt to make Israel a pariah state by cutting off vital business partnerships with major transnational firms. We can't subject our residents to the threat of service disruptions because we couldn't contract with a mainstream corporation that happens to operate in a country some people don't like. That's no way to run government. And I do understand the piece about where feasible. Who then is going to be the person who determines what's feasible and what's not feasible? Will there be a court case? Will this be drawn out in further court proceedings? Will we have to hire additional staff to compile the list of companies and countries we can't do business with? Who will make that determination? How long will it take? How much slower will city government be because of that? If a foreign nation's conduct is deemed to be so reprehensible that the US State Department and the Foreign Ministries of allied countries determine that firms are prohibited from engaging with that nation, the city will follow these regulations, as we have in the past. But short of that, we cannot and will not force our already burdened city officials to autonomously compile our own list of foreign countries engaged in genocide, ethnic cleansing, or apartheid, and then perform the extensive research into every potential business partner's exposure to such nations or regimes. It's so unreasonable that I almost can't believe we have to spell it out like this. But if there's even a remote possibility that something like this could become city law, then we have a responsibility to our constituents to prevent that from happening. That's the purpose of Bill 1425. I'm glad that my colleagues have joined me in this effort to steer the government of Pittsburgh away from these divisive and destructive proposals. I wanted to also just take a moment to mention that since being elected in 2018, I have personally written, authored, and helped to pass several bills adding or amending protected classes in the City of Pittsburgh, including sex, sexual orientation, gender identity, gender expression, pregnancy status, language spoken, citizenship status, and status as a victim of domestic violence. Not all of these belong in the proposed referendum package, but to question my commitment to human rights and fighting for those in these protected classes is unfortunate, to say the least. I'll leave it at that. I want to, again, thank everyone for being here. I want to thank my council colleagues for being here and for listening to many of the people who spoke today and represent the voices of many more than were here today as well. So thank you for engaging in this process. Thank you all for engaging in this democratic process. And with that, this, with there being no further business of this public hearing, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.